Good evening, folks. At this point, we'll call the Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012 Meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. If you would, this evening, I'll lead us in our invocation, if you would. Bow for prayer. Heavenly Father, we again come to you this evening asking for your blessing upon this board, that you would give us wisdom, that the folks who will speak to us tonight would, you'd give them clarity of mind, and they would speak clearly, and we would understand, and we would leave here as much as possible with like mind and like heart. I pray that everything that we do, every thought will be for, would bring glory to you and be for the benefit of the folks that we're elected to serve. And I just thank you for this privilege that we have as commissioners, and I thank you for the participation, and I pray your blessing upon these scouts here this evening, their troop leaders, that you just nurture them, and give them wisdom. We ask it in the name of our Savior, amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Brian. This is Scout Troop Number 360. They're from my home church, and I just about forgot about. Come on up here.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, for doing justice for all.
I'm gonna take a matter of privilege here this evening, and I want to welcome back to our board Sarah Tice. Sarah served this board and the citizens of this county ably for a long time, and we missed you while you were gone, Sarah, and we're certainly glad to have you back, and we appreciate your willingness to serve again. And I may be so presumptuous as to say that I hope your tenure here is longer than two meetings, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be back.
Okay. All right, Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have two adjustments. Need to remove the appointment before the board, which is Item 6, and under administrative matters, I'd also like to remove Item D, and this is Memo Number 9, the request from Vehicle Services.
Let's see. The appointment for the board, that was number, yes, 6, okay. I was looking at memo numbers, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Memo 3, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Are there any adjustments coming from any member of the board? Hearing none, I would move that we adopt this agenda as it has been adjusted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under presentation of special recognitions and awards this evening, we have a presentation of adoption of a proclamation proclaiming Saturday, October 13th, 2012, as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day. And is there someone here to present this? If you would come forward, sir, you just step to the podium there, state your name for the record, and then I'll join you out front.
I'm Stuart Maida. I'm the chairman of the Iredell Walk 10 Alzheimer's here in Iredell County.
Okay. I'm going to step out front, and you can step through the gate, and I'll present you this proclamation and read it to the audience, sir. All right, yeah, it's working. What we have here is a proclamation declaring Saturday, October 13th, 2012, as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day, whereas there are as many as 5.4 million Americans living with Alzheimer's disease aside. A figure that is expected to grow to as many as 16 million by mid-century if something is not done, and whereas there are currently 185,000 individuals living in the state of North Carolina who suffer from this disease, and that number is expected to increase by 20,000 by the year 2020, and whereas researchers are making great progress in developing ways to accurately diagnose and treat Alzheimer's disease, and whereas our citizens can learn more about this disease by visiting www.alz.org to learn more about Alzheimer's disease and how funds are being raised to combat it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners that Saturday, October 13th, 2012, be proclaimed as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day, and for citizens to be encouraged to support the effort to combat this debilitating and deadly disease this day, the 22nd of October, 2012, by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, and I'll let you address the audience if you have anything to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. On October 13th, at the Iredell County Fairgrounds, we'll meet once again. Last year, we had about 400 people come out. It's a very uplifting day. It's the culmination of a year's worth of fundraising, and as important, building awareness about the disease. So we encourage you to come out with your families, with your furry family members as well. The walk itself is only a little over a mile. It's mostly symbolic. We will have entertainment there as well, and of course, a lot of information from the Alzheimer Association for those families who are struggling with the disease. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. I'll present you some behalf of the board, and thank you for what you're doing. Next, under presentations, is a presentation and adoption of a proclamation proclaiming August 2012 as Long Term Care Resident Rights Month. And I believe we have someone here, Cindy Kincaid, is she here this evening? If not, I'll just read it, and we'll make this, our clerk will make this available to her. This is a proclamation for the Long Term Care Residents Rights Month, 2012, My Voice, My Vote, My Right, whereas there are more than 1.6 million individuals living in 16,000 nursing homes, and 1 million individuals living in 50,000 boarding care assisted living facilities in the United States, and whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy, and whereas all citizens should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination, and whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens, to recognize their rich individuality, and to affirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care, and whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month with the theme My Voice, My Vote, My Right, to emphasize the importance of affirming these rights through facility, practices, public policy, and resident-centered decision-making. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2012 as Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. This is the second day of October, 2012. And I'll sign this, and we'll be sure that Ms. Kincaid gets this. We'll move now to the public hearings. I declare the meeting to be in a public hearing in consideration of requests from Karen Schultz to rezone 5.56 acres owned by Friendship Holding Corporation from highway business to general business. Its location is the corner of Tomlin Mill Road and Lynch Road in Statesville, North Carolina. Mr. Ruskowski, welcome this evening.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the board. Let me just get my presentation up here real quick. And I apologize, this seems to have disappeared on me. When all else fails, resort to the flash drive. Again, I apologize, I tried to set this up before the meeting. Okay, I think we're ready to go now. Sorry about that. Okay, this is Case 12-1209-1. Again, this is a general use rezoning request from highway business to general business. It's located at the corner of Tomlin Mill and Lynch Roads. It's in close proximity to Interstate 77, and there on the map, you can see that Interstate 77 is to the right. Again, it's, the current zoning is highway business, but there's actually existing general business across the road, and there's also highway business to the east of this location. Currently, there's an existing gas station, and the remainder of the track is vacant. And this is an enlarged photo, and this is the property in question outlined in blue. The future land use category for this area, it's actually designated as Highway Interchange Commercial, and those are reserved for high intensity uses that are related to travel, thus I-77, the interstate, and secondary uses, including retail and offices. The general use district that the property owner is requesting allows for the greatest future, greatest flexibility in future development of this property. Again, as you can see, the Highway Interchange Commercial District, it actually extends pretty far to the west, and also to the east to encompass those highway business areas that we were, I referred to just a minute ago. Okay, here's the aerial. This shows the existing gas station that's located there, so the remainder of this track is actually available for future development. This is a view of the existing gas station. This is across Tomlin Mill Road, looking to the, I believe, to the west or left if you're standing facing the road. Again, across Tomlin Mill Road, that's in, both are existing farm service type businesses. This is looking towards I-77 to the east. That tree line that you see right here, that's the western tree line that you'll see in the aerial, and I'll point that out again to you when we, towards the end of the presentation, but there's actually a single-family residence to the west, just beyond that tree line. That's the south, if you will, tree line, the southern portion of the property. This is looking across Lynch Road, and in the foreground here, you'll actually see that this used to be part of a driveway access, and it's been, with their remodel, DOT actually required some revisions to the driveway access to the property, and they're also currently working with DOT for further revisions of driveway access. This is looking south on Lynch Road, and again, looking back towards Tomlin Mill Road. I wanted to put this site plan in here because I think it's important for a couple of reasons. It shows you the scale of the existing conditions. Again, here's the gas station, but directly behind there, it's kind of hard to tell on this map, but there are two, like rectangular areas. That's actually septic field, existing and repair area. So my point is, development of the property directly behind the gas station is very limited. And this has been shown by the applicant just to show that any future development of this western portion would be served by driveway access in a loop fashion such as this. And again, they're still working with DOT on those details. And this is that tree line that I pointed out to you in the picture that separates that residential structure from this area. Again, just another aerial view for you. The planning board reviewed this. There was a mix of public comment that was given to the board that night in support and against. You will probably hear even tonight, as the planning board did, a flea market type use that's being proposed for the property. Although that may be the owner's intention, I just want to forewarn you again that this is a general use rezoning request. And the planning board, ultimately, they did vote eight to zero in favor of recommending this rezoning request to you. Our final comments is that this request does appear to be in harmony and intent with the 2030 land use plan for allowing intense commercial development along this corridor, and the proposed district fits into that Highway Interchange Commercial designation and is consistent with the existing zoning patterns that I pointed out to you in the area. And we also believe that a general use request would be most appropriate to allow for the greatest flexibility for future development of this property as close to I-77 as it is. And I'll pause if you have any questions of me.
Mr. Ruskowski, in our ordinance, refresh us as to what the setbacks would be between it and any residential property?
If I remember correctly, and I tell you what, instead of me guessing, let me look real quick because I want to make sure you're... That setback, there's a 30-foot front, a 10-foot on the side, and a 20-foot in the
Would the, would the back of the, of the single resident property owner, excuse me, would that property line be considered a back or a side?
Let me bring that aerial up. And are you referring to that area? That's actually, that would be a, I'd have to say that that would be probably the, I'd call that a front setback, honestly, I would, because it runs parallel with that line. So I would run a 30-foot setback here, and I would do a 30-foot setback there. That's mine.
Okay.
Now, on the side, there's a 10-foot.
Correct. Which, there's 10 feet of trees there now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. In order to go from the current zoning to this, to this requested zoning, do they, does the property owner have to define what they're going to do with the property?
Not for this general use rezoning request, no, sir.
Okay, so Ms. Schultz did not need to tell us it was going to be a flea market. She could have just said, "I want to rezone it," and then that, that's it, correct?
That could have been sufficient, yes, sir. And I do want to highlight one more thing on buffering, because this area, we would not actually require any further buffering in this area because it already adjoins land that's identified in our future land use plan for development of highway commercial uses, so there would be no further buffering.
Okay.
Are there any restrictions on what type of lighting you have on that property that abuts the residential? Would it have to be directed inwardly toward the interior of the property?
There is language in our ordinance that covers lighting, so it does not interfere or is intrusive to neighboring properties.
Any other questions? It's not. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either for or against this? Feel free to do so. If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Just briefly, before Ms. Schultz starts, my name is Bedford Cannon, and I'm going to be representing Friendship Holding. Ms. Schultz has a presentation that she's going to make. I have a few comments. I've also got some packages. Paper never hurts, and I'd like, before she starts, to distribute these packages. They will, they will be helpful in the sense that they will give each one of you your individual plat of this particular piece of property, plus it has some matters concerning the support, and I'll let Ms. Schultz begin.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Karen Schultz. I am shareholder of Friendship Holding Corporation and owner of Tomlin Mill One Stop. I was not born in this area, however, I have lived in North Iredell for 25 years, all of my adult life. In the past few years, as the economy has continued to crash, several residents asked me about selling goods in our parking lot. As the requests increased, I realized a majority of the community would support a monthly, possibly a semi-monthly yard sale for, like a farmer's market type event. This spring, I contacted the permit office and asked to see if I could do this in our lower lot. The plot is zoned highway business. The zoning allows gas stations, restaurants, retail stores, et cetera. I thought it would not be a problem. However, the Iredell County Permit Office told me the outlines I have asked for and what I was talking about would fall under the classification of a flea market that now requires general business zoning. As an owner-operator of Tomlin Mill One Stop for over 10 years, let history be your guide. The store is neat, clean, and people-oriented. We have hosted customer appreciation days. We have had fundraisers, other community events without incident, although nobody can guarantee the future. I believe the people who signed the petitions before you approve what we have accomplished in the past and have faith in what we intend to do with the property in the future. Since these plots are in the future land use plan to be rezoned general business, it stands to reason the board would approve these 5.5 acres to general business classification, matching the zoning of our neighboring businesses. We are hoping the board will see the utility of this request, and the benefit will be to the community to rezone this property. Thank you again for your time.
My comments will be brief because I think Ms. Schultz has done a very good job, and staff has done a very good job of explaining to you what this situation is. I just have a couple of comments, and I'll try not to duplicate. The first thing is that Friendship Holding comes to you with a situation where they are only asking you to stay within the purview of the county land use plan that you have previously passed for this county. It's, it's kind of obvious that the Tomlin Mill Road area is going to be one of your denser areas as far as commercial use goes, and of course, the land use plan shows that. And this is, request does not request, or does not ask the board to deviate from what basically we spent an awful lot of time on determining, you know, what are proper land uses for various areas in this county. A second thing that I think's important is that Chairman of the Planning Board made two suggestions, which we have followed up on, and I think showed good faith on the part of the petitioner here. The first thing is they wanted a more definite placement on the plat with regards to the roadway that would run through the property off of Tomlin Mill Road and out onto Lynch Road, and we have attempted to do that in a revised plat that Jordan Surveying has prepared for us and is also prepared for you. Secondly, Chairman Field suggested that contact be made with the North Carolina Department of Transportation with regards to the cut, or a cut, off of Tomlin Mill Road. Ms. Schultz has complied with that. She has had a meeting, preliminary meeting. There hasn't been a final decision made with regards to placement there in the event that you have a rezoning and the roadway, in fact, is placed there. But the point is that she has complied with Chairman Field's request, had the initial meeting, had initial positive input from the Department of Transportation, and continues to work with them to get the exact positioning for a cut for a roadway, if in fact, there's going to be a rezoning of the property. One important factor, I think, is the, you have about a 4,000 per day car count there now, and I think that it's 13,800 is the maximum that is, would be envisioned to be a proper amount, so that the, the use of Tomlin Mill Road right now is nowhere near this maximum number that has been established. And frankly, we, I mean, we've tried to be honest with the board and say what we would envision the property would be used for. I would say this, if gasoline is $4 a gallon, and you can have a chance to buy various things for your home by going two or three miles as opposed to 14 or 15 or 16 miles, it's amazing to me, frightening, but you can, the dollars saved in gasoline are unbelievable, that they, they add up the way they do. And I, I can only say that I had a daughter that had a birthday, and she's in the Chapel Hill area, and my wife and I went down to see her, and we, you know, if we hadn't gotten a taste already of how much gasoline costs, you know, at this point in time, we certainly got an education, but if people could, could go two, three miles as opposed to eight, 10, 12 miles one way to purchase various things, items for their home, things they need around their home, you can save a lot of money. And the traffic flow, I think you can see, is going to really come off of Tomlin Mill Road, and it'll flow throughout Lynch Road. I think it will flow away from the one home that is adjacent to these properties. I believe your plat will show that the foliage is located over on our side of the line, and the pictures obviously show that there's a lot of it, and I think it'll have a minimal impact or a GB classification and the anticipated use. impact or a GB classification, and the anticipated use is not going to have any type of a negative impact on the adjacent property, and we'll try to answer any questions that the board might have, either myself or Ms. Schultz. Thank you.
But it is the intent of the applicant, Mr. Cannon, to have access to the property from Lentz Road, they could, they have ingress and egress to the property from Lentz Road?
There would be, I would not say there would not be ingress and egress, but I, I would just say that, you know, given, given the convenience store and the pumper station in conjunction with the, a flea market, I would anticipate that 80 to 90 percent of the traffic would flow off of Tomlin Mill Road and would flow out Lentz Road. Would that be a fair statement? I, I would think that that would be the percentage that you would anticipate.
The point I'm trying to make, though, is somebody came up from the south on Lentz Road or the, or the interstate, they could, if they came from the south, they could just come up Lentz Road and turn onto the property without having to go out on Tomlin Mill Road, or if they came up the interstate, they could turn south on Lentz and then turn right into the property.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions of these folks before they sit down? All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak, if you would come forward? And if you would, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Lois Tomlin, and I am the residential that lives in the corner of this property, and back in May, I was called by Bedford Cannon and I was told that Karen Schultz wanted to put a flea market and utility buildings beside of my property, and at that time, I told him I did not want it that close to me. I never received anything in writing, and then at the zoning meeting, I was told it was going to be yard sales, so I don't know what to believe, and I don't know why it would be rezoned for general business that close to a residential. Because general business, you can put anything there, and which now she says that that's what she's going to do. And they were talking about the buffer, the buffer that, that's there right now is mostly on my property. There's a few trees that she has put there, but the rest is on my property and it needs to be a better buffer. And that's all I have to say, it's just that I don't feel like it should be zoned general business. Highway business should be good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else?
My name is Sam Hall, and I live 2.4 miles west of Karen's store on Snow Creek Road. That puts me a grand sum total of one mile outside of Charles, North Carolina. I am a customer of this store, and I am in favor of Karen's request for several reasons. One of the most primary reasons is everyone has something in their homes that they need or would like to convert to cash. A yard sale is one of the easiest ways. City of Statesville has WSIC, radio, and swap shop. As of yesterday, our little town, Olin, doesn't have a radio station, so we don't have any real good way of swapping things around. Karen's yard sale would be an added convenience for our community. Another item, it would, I assume she's going to charge for the tables back when gas was 20 cents a gallon. Normal country operator received 3 cents a gallon profit off of each gallon sold, and that would cover his electric bill for the month. I don't know what Karen makes off of gas now, but I guarantee you her profits on gas won't touch her power bill. The hot word today is called recycling. Yard sales is a legitimate version of recycling. If you deny her request, there is going to be another version, or correction, I hope another version of recycling is not going to be implemented, and that is people riding the roads, throwing it out. And the last part of the recycling system on that is, if they throw it out, then the county prisoners are going to be walking the road and picking up the trash, and we'll have orange trash bags again headed for the landfill. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is anyone else?
Good afternoon. Not everybody knows me, I'm Lee Whitesides, I'm Karen Schultz's husband. I'm a lieutenant with the Navy County Sheriff's Office. I've been in law enforcement for 22 years. During the last meeting, I heard a lot of statements stated how there's a lot of crooks involved in yard sales, and one man actually said he knows because he bought a lot of stolen property from yard sales. I'm sure the Irondale County Sheriff's Office would like to know about that, but that's not my jurisdiction. I just want to say, I've been in service of the community for 22 years, and before that, I was in service for my country. That's what I love to do, is serve my people, and that's what my wife and our family want to do for our community here. That's what we're here for. We're trying to provide for our community during this bad time. The economy is not doing well, the community base is not doing well, we're not only trying to help ourselves, we're also trying to help our community in a good fashion way, trying to bring the community together. There's one opposition, they have their reasons, they live with that, I'm fine with that, we have our reasons, and it's their right to speak their mind as it is mine to speak mine. We're just trying to be good people, trying to do a good thing for good people, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, we declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval of the zoning change.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks, for coming out. At this point, we'll call this meeting in the public hearing in consideration of citizen comments and questions regarding the submittal of an application for scattered site housing community development block grants. Mr. Ruskowski?
All right, thank you Chairman Johnson. For some of you, this is the fourth time you've heard this item from Ms. Tice, it's the first, so I will be brief. We are planning upon your approval tonight to submit a grant to the state of North Carolina, or grant application to the state of North Carolina for $225,000, and that will pay for proposed rehabilitation of four homes, as well as emergency repairs to four homes for low to moderate income elderly handicapped folks in Irondale County. What I've included in your agenda packet tonight is actually just a synopsis of the application contents, as well as the budget. Just highlight a couple of things to you, the board will continue to be deeply involved in this grant, the, if we are, well, when we are awarded the grant, I will actually come back to you to ask for appointment of a selection committee, to which you will appoint members that will assist me in reviewing grant applications from citizens to ensure that they qualify for this grant, so there are some checks and balances already integrated into this system. Again, $225,000, there's no local match required of this. There's $22,250 available to help with administration of the grant, and we do intend to seek requests for proposals from qualified consultants to assist me with portions of this project. It's a 30-month grant, and I believe that's all I wanted to review with you at this point, unless you have any questions with me.
Any questions, Mr. Ruskowski?
Yeah, I'd like to ask three questions, just so that you can, so that people who are watching and aren't reading these briefs, so that they can understand. All right, is there any county money going to be used in this?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right, can any of this money go to landlords?
No, sir.
It has to only be a homeowner?
Yes, sir.
And if we don't accept this money, and, and we, we don't accept it, will it simply go to another county?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not going to lower anybody's taxes if we vote no?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
And Mr. Chair, after you entertain any public comment, I would ask that you consider allowing staff to submit this grant and to authorize yourself as chairman to execute all documentation related to this application.
All right, if there's no other question, Russ, Mr. Ruskowski, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this? Yes, sir. Yes, so, please come forward and state your name. Hearing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and a motion is in order, I take it, Mr. Ruskowski, to give you permission to submit this grant and for the chairman to sign any authorization for it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to approve this request from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, which is a, is request, it's, this is a two-part request. The first is to approve Budget Amendment Number Eight to appropriate $105,000 to reimburse Union Grove Volunteer Fire Department for a land purchase, and the second part is to request for the authorization to the Countywide Fire District to appropriate funds to the Union Grove Volunteer Fire Department for debt service on a new building, which would begin in fiscal year 2014. I believe interim Fire Marshal Garland Clover is here from our staff to make this request, and also Nolan Schumaker, the chief from Union Grove, is here as well.
Mr. Smith, I'm on this. Nolan Schumaker and Frank Phillips, they, they may have some comments, if they'd move up here to the front row, in case we have any questions of these gentlemen. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Several months ago, Union Grove Fire Department approached the Irondale County Fire Tax Board and requested assistance for an unexpected emergency that took place at their main fire station up on Highway 901. The damage that was discovered was significant enough for the station may be forced to close or to move if, if a structural collapse would happen to take place. The collapse, if it would take place at that structure, could damage the existing apparatus in the station and/or injure firefighters and/or civilians that may be in that particular area. So affecting the business of the station as far as operational response, that could dramatically affect the ISO insurance ratings for that district, and that would cause an increase of insurance premiums for the residential customers and commercial customers in that area. So what I want to do is to bring forward Mr. Nolan and Mr. Phillips, and they have a presentation they want to show you that may answer a lot of questions that you have.
Chairman Johnson and Commissioners, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nolan Schumaker, I'm the chief of the Union Grove Fire Department. And I'm going to have to resort to Mr., to the flash drive, just like the previous man did.
You pronounce it Ruskowski.
Ruskowski. I'm not good with those kinds of names.
I've learned.
He answers to Joey pretty well.
Yeah, he did.
In the PowerPoint presentation that I have, we have some significant building damage that has occurred to the building due to some long-term water damage that has occurred over a period of, at best guess, seven years. Approximately seven years ago, we had a water leak that happened underneath the structure. According to the Irondale Water Corporation, somewhere in the neighborhood of 30,000 gallons of water was lost. Upon finding this leak, we were able to, to fix the leak, but we have noticed this corner of the building sinking because of the water damage. I have several pictures here, I'll try to go through them pretty fast. This is the largest of the cracks, at about a two-inch wide crack in the brick. Some of the cracks go back on the wall towards the north of the, north end of the building up to 30 feet. This is the walk-through door, the crack, which is approximately 19 feet from the corner, and that crack extends all the way to that lintel over top of that door. This is a picture looking through the crack, you can actually see Union Grove Mill and Company from the back of the building, looking through the building, all the way across 901. This is the largest portion of the crack. Here, this is the measurement of the largest portion of the cracks in the corner of the building. This is the framing around the roll-up door for the fire trucks, it's actually pulling away as the corner sinks, and these are the major cracks to the existing concrete floor and pad that is out back of the fire department, and also, this is another major crack that has came in the last couple of years from the water damage that we've had. These are the cracks interior of the building to the block wall, this interior of the brick veneer that's on the exterior. And this picture here shows, this is another picture showing the inside of the wall, 19 feet from the corner, is actually how far the damage continues into the building. Some more of the concrete cracks and problem that we had with the concrete pad. The first item that you were asked to consider was a quest for approval of Budget Member The first item that you were asked to consider was a request for approval of Budget Member Number Eight for appropriation of $105,000. That $105,000 is to buy this parcel of land. We have already been able to obtain this parcel of land. It is 9.910 acres. This is about 400 yards west of the existing station, so it's not to affect our ISO rating of our station being in the center of our district and affect in response times in any location within our district. It's as close a proximity as we could obtain land. This land does lay very well, has just a gentle slope to the rear of the land, would require minimal grading and site preparation work for building a fire station. That's pretty much all I have. I'll be glad to answer any question.
If you were to attempt to repair this building, Mr. Schumaker, you have an estimate of what it would cost and how much additional life it would add to the building?
I've spoken with three different engineers, one of them being Mr. Knight here in Statesville, also Mr. Grant, and I ended up working with an engineer out of Elkin, Mr. Cal Cockrum. He has ended up drawing us a plan for fixing our building. His current estimate to accomplish his plan was over $130,000, just for the existing building. We have operated since 1960, well, since 1977, we've operated out of a fire department of 3,700 square feet. That's the total square footage that we have at Union Grove Fire Department. Building value is valued at $600,000. That's the tax value on the books at Iroh County right now. It'd be a large portion of that building value to the repair of this one incident. And we do not know, all engineers that I've talked with, none of them will put in writing that this is going to be the fix, this is not, we're not going to uncover more, or it's going to cost more money. Because until you open up the concrete, until you open up the, those things, they will not stand behind that estimate.
Chief Schumaker, can you go over the septic system problem you also have that you've told Chairman Phillips and the board?
Yes. In 1964, the fire department was originally built. That was the original part of the building. Since 1977, the rear part of the building was added on, two more truck bays. When they added on those two truck bays, the existing septic system for the building in 1964, they dug the footings straight across the top of the septic thing. And it actually has been that way since 1977, and could be a contributor to our problems. No engineers will, you know, they haven't said that that's all what caused it, or, but that is a problem that we run into in the fix. The more we uncover, the worse it gets.
Can you also tell us where your repair field is at?
I have no area for repair field. Union Grove Fire Department currently sits on .9 tenths of an acre. We have only land enough for the building, the community center that's attached to the building, and the septic system as is. We have no land for repair area. Everything is taken up by parking lot, community center, and truck sheds.
So your argument is that if you did spend $130,000 to renovate the building, you have no level of comfort that you would appreciably increase the lifespan of the building, plus you're operating in the building because the increased size of the apparatus is fairly much obsolete anyway, is that?
Yes, sir. That's a fair assumption.
I've got a few questions. Just let me play devil's advocate.
Yes, sir.
For a bit. Chief Schumaker, I've visited your station, I'm aware of your problem. The cracks on the floor, I mean, a lot of people say, well, gee, my garage has cracks on the floor, I have cracks in my driveway, you know, why can't you just, why can't you just live with it? Okay? Now, and I'm not minimizing, I'm not trying to minimize any of the other issues here, but just having cracks in the driveway, I mean, or on, in the floor, I mean, do y'all know that there's not a void under the floor if you've, if there's a chance that your septic system is not functioning properly, or that you had 30,000 gallons flow through pretty good? I mean, do you know that you don't, do you, have you any idea what's under the floor that is cracking?
The concrete in question was poured in 1977. I spent 26 years at Union Grove Fire Department, and until the last two to three years, we noticed no cracking whatsoever.
Okay.
This has appeared in the last few years, which leads me to believe that it is damaged from the water problem that we had, because we had no problems with this in the prior year since 1977 with any cracking. All the cracks have appeared within the last three to four years.
This is almost an advertisement for why, why we do onsite waste water permitting, because if it's done properly, then you don't, then we know where the, where the tile fields are.
Yes.
And we won't, we don't let people build on top of them anymore. This is, you know, people don't understand why we do permits. This is exactly why we don't do permits, because we've got a $600,000 building that we're going to walk away from, and frankly, nobody's going to buy it. Okay? That's, that's why we go through the permitting process, is, and this time, we're going to take, we're going to be the ones that take the, take the hit, or your fire department will take the hit.
Of that $600,000, $600,000, Commissioner Robertson, that also includes the community building. And the community building will remain in operation.
All right.
There is nothing affecting the community building operations by what has happened to the station. The only thing, we will be abandoned, well, not necessarily abandoned, the only thing that the commissioners will have to decide is to close that 3,700 square feet, which is the existing fire department.
Okay.
There is a firewall between the fire department and the community center.
We're losing some value here.
Yes.
Okay. All right. If, if I could ask Mr. Phillips, clearly you have lots of different departments asking for money, and some forecast, they have, we have, we have some departments that have no plan, not much of a plan, some have a one- or two-year plan, some have five-year plans. And, and some of the departments that have come to us have stated, hey, we need to replace, modify, renovate, move, for a variety of reasons, their, their fire stations. Specifically, we had South Irondale and Wayside coming at, pretty much at the same time, asking for new fire stations. Wayside got theirs, South Irondale was expecting to be next. This, this request is kind of, was unexpected, it wasn't known at the time that it would become imperative to, to take action this quickly. How will, if we vote in favor of the recommendation, how will that impact South Irondale in their, in their request for, you know, for what they had wanted to do with, with their station?
Well, I don't foresee that it would impact South Irondale at all. They are not expecting to have a department at this moment. In fact, as discussed with the county commissioners over the years, we were not going to build any more fire departments until Lake Norman finished paying for theirs. However, this is, is an exception. It is, we view it as an emergency measure. Our board did look at whether or not it was feasible to put $130,000 into repairs, but as you are aware, they have a very small building.
You don't even know that, do you?
Oh, well. But the fact is, it's, it's a very small building. Our view was, they're going to need to expand that property, make their department larger. The opportunity came open for them to purchase the land, and we encouraged them to do that. We also did not see the value of putting $130,000 into a repair, just to have five or six years down the road, have to build a new department anyway. It just was not feasible, in our minds, to do such a thing.
But we're, but because we're doing this, I mean, we're, we're buying the land, and it's, it's a good price and a good value, I'm glad that they're buying the land. That would have been a good thing to do, even if they didn't think that they needed it for several years.
Right.
Just because of the location and, and the size and all that kind of good stuff. But, but the fact is, is we're going to be on the hook for, and, and I know that that $1.2 million is, is not, you know, a set-in-stone number, but it's, it's in the ballpark, so to speak, for what it would, what it's going to cost to actually build a replacement station on this site. If we're assuming that additional debt load, then when the Lake Norman Fire and Rescue, when they, when their mortgage comes off the books, then does that delay, is that going to delay South Irondale's expectation that they are going to be next?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
And we, we currently have funds in our building.
Okay.
Reserve, that we can handle that comfortably, I believe.
We've, you know, we've built a fair number of fire stations here recently. At some point, just, just know there will be, there's going to be all this, it's going to like schools. Once you build so many new schools, then all of a sudden, everybody wants a new school. So be, be prepared for, you know, for folks asking for it just because everybody else has one.
Well, we, we certainly take need into consideration.
I don't mean that in a, in a.
Right.
In a, in a.
Many of these departments.
In a graded way, it's just if everybody else has, has new stuff, there's certainly an expectation that, when am I going to get mine? And just know it's going to be kind of tough, we're going to have to start saying no.
Well, we recognize that, as our board, many of these departments were built in the 60s or before, and simply age has deteriorated the buildings. Fire departments have outgrown the building simply because of population increase, trucks are bigger, more people involved, and the departments are having to be replaced. But we're trying to do it on a, the best schedule we can come up with, and I trust that South Irondale understands the urgency involved in this. We're not simply putting Union Grove in front of them for any reason, except it's an emergency. Are there any other questions for me?
No, I just have a statement. I'm going to make sure we understand. I'm supportive of this. I do believe that if it hadn't been for the structural problems with the building, at some point, you would, we would have to build Union Grove a new fire department anyway. I mean, the building.
Correct.
For all that is expected with hatters, materials, first responder calls, and so forth for fire departments, the size of the individual pieces of apparatus and the number of pieces of apparatus they have, a 3,700-square-foot building is becoming obsolete. There may be people who, who doubt that, but that, it'd be pretty tight to get all your equipment.
Absolutely.
But I want to leave here with a level of comfort, and I've looked at spreadsheets that, that show the debt service for Lake Norman, and it rotates off. And I'm satisfied that if we make this commitment, that we'll be able to service this debt with the existing revenue stream. I'm satisfied that if there's not any other commitments withstanding, we would be able to service this and South Irondale's debt service if they come in with a, with a request similar to this dollar amount. But I guess this question, Mr. Phillips, would be best directed toward Mr. Schumaker. What do you anticipate being the terms of this loan? What we have before us is a 20-year loan with payments of $94,532 for, for 20 years. And my concern is, and I think I expressed this to you on the phone, is I don't buy things this way, but a lot of people buy things this way, and when they buy something, they, they buy a payment. And they can afford $100,000 a year payment. Well, if we finance a debt for 20 years as compared to what we've been doing for 15 years, the tendency is going to be, we're just, we're going to buy a payment, so in essence, what we're going to do, we're just going to start buying bigger buildings. Do you follow what I'm saying? I mean, if, if you've got two cars on the park, on the lot, and one's $15,000 and one's $20,000, and you can afford a $500 a month car payment, but you can get a longer-term payment on the bigger car, a lot of people are going to buy the bigger car because it fits their payment. What I'm concerned about over time is, we're going to buy a $100,000 a year payment because that's the way some people look at things, they're going to buy a payment, and they're going to buy that payment for 20 years. And the tendency is going to be to build more building than we need. I mean, it's just the way it happens. And I was wondering, historically, I believe we've been going with 15-year notes, is that right?
Or we've even looked at some 10.
Yeah. I mean, that, I'm just saying that four years down the road, if someone comes in and we have $100,000, I'm not saying, I trust Mr. Schumaker, he's going to look to get it done as cheaply as he can and not pay a bank interest, but I want to make sure that we understand if we gravitate toward a 20-year loan, that, that loan is going to be $100,000 a year for 15 years, or it's going to be $100,000 a year for 20 years. The difference is going to be in how many bells and whistles is on the building that we build in the future, and how large is that building, and is that increased floor space in that building absolutely necessary? I guess that's what I'm driving at.
I'd like to answer that question. Chairman Johnson, I guess the best way to answer that being a two-part question. First, I will answer the part of the what size fire department you need. When I started doing this, I did not look at what we want. That's not, that wasn't part of the equation. I looked at fire stations throughout this region, and what would, was considered to be a fire station that would serve the purposes, and serve the purposes for 50 years. That was what we looked at. We came up with a 12,000-square-foot ceiling for the size of the fire department. That was the happy medium between everything that we looked at, some being upwards of 14,000, 15,000 square feet, some being as low as 10,000 square feet. So we looked at 12,000. That's how we came up with what the square footage was. When I went to the architect to start drawing this building, that was the criteria that I gave him. This is what I want, 12,000 square feet, you put what you can into the building. He came back with a very good drawing, I was very happy with that. I think that it will service Union Grove Fire District for 50 years and even more. We do need the increased space. We have worked since 1964, well, 1977, when the addition was built, we have worked out of 3,700 square feet. We have outgrown our building. We were in the process, our five-year plan was to request this from the Fire Tax Board towards the end of this five, end of our five-year plan, and the reason for that is because of the economy and the way the economy has dropped and the revenues coming into the fire. and the revenues coming into the fire tax. We had not requested anything extra. Now, to speak to you on the financing part, um, I came with the request originally. I was quoted a one-point seven, a three-point seven-five interest rate. That's what we were working off of on amortization table, one-point-two million dollars. That amount of money, twenty-year note, it's going to be ninety-four thousand dollars a year. I was just notified yesterday that I've been approved for two-and-a-half percent interest rate, which dropped my payment to sixty-three thousand. I did not want to change what the request was because I could take the ninety-four thousand and reduce that twenty-year note to a fifteen-year note and not have to, not change anything about this request. And I'll be more than happy to do it.
Well, now you're getting it. Where is that two-point-seven percent interest rate? That sounds pretty good.
Two-point-five.
Two-point-five? Is that local?
That was, well.
Without having to divulge your.
Yes, sir, it is.
It is local, okay.
It's a bank that we do business.
I'll be talking to you next week.
Any further questions?
Again, I support this request, but I would, I strongly believe that we should adhere to a fifteen-year maximum term on any bill. Because of, again, when you look at revenue streams, what too many people, it, it is a financial error to ever buy a payment, but people do it when they buy houses, they buy, when they buy cars. They do not think of the eventual total cost of what they will have and whatever asset they're purchasing. I mean, that, that is business finance one-on-one. You never buy a payment. But it is the way some folks are conditioned to think. And I'm not being critical when I say that, but it is a mistake. And if we gravitate toward a twenty-year loan, we're going to wind up over the long term paying tens of thousands of dollars more in interest and we're going to run the risk of buying more building than we actually need to service the people that we choose to serve. And I congratulate Mr. Schumaker for his understanding of that and his, his willingness to reduce a twenty-year note to a fifteen-year note. The other thing that, in, in looking at the numbers, I strongly believe that we, we ought to keep enough money in the fund balance for the countywide fire service district so that if, if someone we suffer the loss of an apparatus in the course of ordinary business and it's not a matter of, of if that will occur, that will occur at some point, that we should maintain the cost of the replacement of, of an apparatus in, in a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars unrestricted fund balance in, in the countywide fire district. I, I think at a minimum, you should keep that. And I think we can, we can do that simultaneously, keeping a fifteen-year maximum on loans. My confidence seems to wane every day. I can't pick up a financial magazine without somebody predicting a recession next year, but I think for the time being, we can, we can live with that.
Well, our Fire Tax Board has tried, um, very diligently to maintain a, a comfortable fund balance.
Right. I know you haven't. I appreciate it. I'm just telling them, when we start losing altitude, if we get below that, that altitude, that's when I go for my parachute. I'm getting out of here. Okay? All right. All right. And Mr. Schumaker, one more question. You, you've been in discussion, I think Mr. Phillips had, and Mr. Brian Schumaker at South Iredale Fire Department, he is aware of what we're doing and this will in no way inhibit his ability to come forth with his plan. Because he, he has, those folks have been real patient.
Concerned of the, the lack of growth in revenue because of this recession.
Mr. We, uh, Mr. Brian Weatherman, I've been in contact with him five, on five different occasions. We have a understanding of what each other is planning and we, uh, I have assured him that I will be working with him in any way that I could. I was able to tell him today what the, uh, numbers, the new numbers, since the bank had come back with the, with the better interest rate and he is more than happy with the remainder of the.
And we, we are, we are not aware, Mr. Chlore, Mr. Phillips, we're not aware of any other, any other structural deficiencies of any other buildings related to the fire service. Because if we commit, if we commit here, we commit to this in South Iredale. Unless this economy gets real rawer and anybody comes after this for a while, it's going to be parking a truck in the pup tent because we're not going to have the money. Okay? All right. All right, uh.
Chairman, could we add at the end of, uh, our recommendations that they finance at over a fifteen-year period? Would that be appropriate? If we take action on their request?
Yeah, we could add that as a part of the motion.
And you feel comfortable, you can do that, Mr. Schumaker, fifteen years?
I feel comfortable with the numbers that I've been given at the bank.
Okay.
That we can, we can meet that criteria.
The motion before us right now is just to approve the budget amendment to get the land bought. Um, the, the one-point-two million on his estimate for the building cost is a preliminary estimate and they're not scheduled to, to start work on that anytime real soon. I'm, I'm comfortable expressing our, the intent of the board and then letting them come back with firmer numbers before we lock anybody in.
Okay, can, can I be so presumptuous to offer a motion that I'm comfortable with? Is that?
Sure.
I'm going to move that we approve budget amendment number eight to appropriate a hundred and five thousand dollars to reimburse Union Grove Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of the land. I'm going to authorize the approciate appropriation of countywide fire district funds Union Grove Fire Department for debt service on new building begin in twenty-fourteen and continuing for fifteen additional years?
To begin in twenty-fourteen?
To begin, that's, they can do it in twenty-fourteen and then they go off fifteen and this will maintain that, that cushion and the, they got a million dollars in the fund balance, right?
Yeah, that's correct, but they're wanting to start construction in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, but he's going to get a construction loan in twenty-thirteen and that construction loan is going to be for a period of approximately thirteen months?
Twelve months.
Twelve, I mean, twelve months, that's what.
And, and I foresee, I'll give you the timeframe. I've, I don't foresee us getting the planning and zoning, all the permitting done before January one of two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
We have, uh, the numbers that are before you are architectural estimates. Architect has made those estimates so far on the building. We think that we're, will be way below architectural estimates for this building. We don't foresee starting before January one of two thousand thirteen a construction loan, which the term of that would continue till ju- two thousand, January one, two thousand fourteen. That will be the term of the construction loan. Union Grove Fire Department Board of Directors has agreed to take care of the interest during the term of that construction loan out of our funds.
There you go.
So the debt service would begin after January one of two thousand fourteen.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And we're continuing for fifteen additional years.
Yes, sir.
After that. Okay?
That's good.
All right. And for the record, with the understanding that this will not impact the availability of funds for South Iredale. Okay, any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Before they get out, you know, Garland Chlore is a paid employee of the county and we appreciate you bringing this to us, but, um, Chief Schumaker and Mr. Phillips are both volunteers that spend a lot of time protecting the community and then they come before the board and we ask you hard questions. Um, we're just trying, we're just trying to do our job. I understand you're trying to do your job. Thanks for your service to the citizens of Iredale County.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number, or item B is a request for the appointment of two citizens to the firefighters relief fund, board of trustees for each volunteer fire department. And Susan Blumenstein will make that request.
I'm required to complete the report, report of fire conditions for each volunteer fire department each year in October. And each of those fire departments has a board of trustees that oversees their fireman's relief fund. This year, um, a few changes have been requested and recommended by the volunteer fire departments for the county commissioner's appointments. We passed out a new worksheet to you, um, this afternoon because, um, Central had come in very late. But in, for Central Volunteer Fire Department, they're requesting Jeremy, um, Pennell to replace Russell Ray. Jim Revis would be the other commissioner appointment. And I won't read each one, just the ones, um, that are changing from last year, if that's okay. And in Wayside, they've recommended Eddie Harp to replace Tim Warren and Farrell Long to replace Richard Ladd. Now, they have some of their appointments that they're changing, but those are the only changes for the commissioner appointments. I'd ask you to approve those.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? Hearing none, the floor is open for appointment of these two individuals.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, um, accept the appointments recommended by Ms. Blumenstein.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Tice for approval. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item C is a request for approval of revisions to a co-location agreement with Trinity Volunteer Fire Department with regards to a, an EMS substation. And this is memo number eight and this is another one that we, uh, gave you in a handout. So you should have an amended memo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In two thousand six, Iredale County entered into an agreement with Trinity Volunteer Fire Department to place a quick response EMS vehicle at, uh, Trinity's main station. We're asking to update that agreement tonight. It was noted in a recent audit that it was approved in a previous budget, approximately, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, to increase the amount of the lease payment, but we never went back and revised the lease agreement. So what we're doing tonight is just actually updating the lease agreement. As I said, this was a budgeted amount in the past and is carried forward. Uh, the increase is due to changing from a quick response vehicle to an ambulance crew, which led to some increased costs at the fire station for utilities and additional space. As a result, we reduced the term of the agreement. Originally, it was fifteen years and we've backed that down to ten years just to reflect the time that has passed.
Okay. So the question I have is, the amount of the lease went up two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. Have we, have we been paying them seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
Yes, sir, since two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
It's just that the lease is out of date and does not reflect that.
The, the lease was not current and accurate with what was being done in the budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, uh, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And E, the final administrative matter is a request for approval of the September eighteenth, two thousand twelve minutes.
Are there any, uh, questions, additions, corrections to those minutes? Not, floor is open for a motion.
I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Tice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We'll move to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Excuse me, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions, the Region F Aging Advisory Committee, one appointment. Floor is open for nominations. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lou Greta Raven, who's been an alternate. Okay, we have a nomination of Miss Lou Greta Raven. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd move we'd close the floor to nominations, appoint Lou Greta Raven by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Floor is open for nominations.
Motion to table.
Motion to table comes from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'm gonna, I have a reminder here and I asked our US Commissioner here to assume these positions and I, she has graciously agreed to do so. Ms. Tice has agreed to serve, uh, on the Cooperative Extension Service Advisory Council as an alternate. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. The Local Emergency Planning Committee. And the Smart Start Iredale Partnership for Children as an alternate. I would move that we appoint Commissioner Tice to those committees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Tice. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention? Public comment? Any new business? County managers report.
Uh, several weeks ago, I polled the board about having a, um, a work session uh, and, and threw out a few dates and we ended up on November ninth. And this is pretty close after the election, but I wanted to go ahead and get this out, uh, tonight and give you all a reminder and also get it out in, in the public. But in, on November ninth, I'd like to hold a morning work session uh, to discuss some fairly big picture issues that I'd like to get some grasp on prior to entering into the budget season, which, uh, is coming around quicker than I had really expected. So, um, like to do that in the morning, probably end at lunch and, or after lunch, right at or after lunch. And, um, I'll send out more information later on, but that is November ninth and that is a Friday.
Where would we have it?
Um, I don't know quite yet, but probably the Ag Center.
Okay. Is that agreeable, everyone?
On a Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Go for it.
Okay. So, November the ninth, Friday, you want to start about seven-thirty or?
I'm open to whatever. Seven-thirty would be fine with me if everybody can be there.
Get me? What about you?
Okay.
I'm an early riser. I'll, I'll do whatever y'all say.
Yep. Stop and get the biscuits.
I'll stop and get the biscuits if you want me to.
If you come at seven-thirty, I'll at least provide that.
Might be eating Miss Susan's biscuits. She makes pretty mean biscuits though. All right. Okay, at this point, I'd move we go into closed session for Attorney Client General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three and Personnel General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
There'll be no action as a result of our closed session. Having said that, I'll for a motion we adjourn. All in favor say aye. [S02] Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.